Roxanne Skogstad-Dietrich.
Yes.
Joanne Smith.
Yeah.
Jennifer Windows.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Moving on to public open forum. Presentation of Elks March Student of the Month, Parker Fleslin.
Right there. All right. Parker Fleslin is the Elks March Male Student of the Month. Parker is an exceptional thoughtful student in our school and community. He has been on the honor roll throughout his high school career. On top of his academics, Park Parker is an active member of both cross-country and track and field teams. Outside of school, he volunteers over at Rainy River Community College during the summer as a helper for college for kids. Parker currently works at Menards. Next year, he plans to attend Vermillion Community College to pursue a degree in wildland and wildlife law enforcement. Parker Fleslin, the Elks Male Student of the Month for March.
Presentation of Elks April Students of the Month, Olivia McBride and Max Marcott.
Olivia McBride is the Elks April Female Student of the Month. Olivia is a very dedicated student that always looks to help others first. She has been on the A honor roll and is taking college-level concurrent enrollment classes during her high school years. Olivia is also involved in extracurricular activities as a member of both the football and basketball cheerleading teams and is a captain for both squads. When not involved in academics and athletics, she has actively volunteered in our community through student council. Olivia currently works at Ronning's. Her future plans are to attend Rainy River Community College in the fall and pursue her associate of arts degree. Olivia McBride, the Elks April Female Student of the Month. Max Marcott is the Elks April Male Student of the Month. Max is a member of Minnesota Honor Society. He has challenged himself academically by taking both honors and college-level classes in high school. Max has been on the A honor roll and principals list throughout his high school career. Along with maintaining excellent grades in the classroom, he is very involved in extracurricular activities as well. Max has been a member of the football, hockey, baseball, bass fishing, and trap shooting teams. It is evident that he leads by example, as Max was selected this year's recipient for the Todd Lepre Award. He is also involved. He is also very involved in the community as a volunteer for numerous activities to include the community cafe, delivering meals for Elks Thanksgiving dinners, worship assistant volunteer at Good Sam Nursing Home, helps with fish care and weigh-ins at the I Falls Bass Championship, helps helps with volunteer events for booster clubs, participates in community cancer walks with Rainy Lake Medical Center team, as well as multiple volunteer activities through Minnesota Honor Society. During the summer months, he works at Rainy Lake Houseboats. Next year, Max plans to attend Vermillion Community College to pursue a degree in their wildland and wildlife law enforcement program and participate on their trap shooting team. His career goal is to become a Minnesota Conservation Officer. Max Marcott, the Elks April Male Student of the Month.
Presentation of Elks May Students of the Month, Jake Sladinski.
Jake Sladinski is the Elks May Male Student of the Month. Jake is an exceptional student and role model in our school. He has been on the A honor roll and principals list throughout his high school career. Along with maintaining good grades in the classroom, Jake has been involved in numerous activities. However, he found his niche in the pool back in fifth grade. Jake is a member of the Broncos Swimming and Diving Team and has been a captain for the past three years. Jake really excelled this year as he qualified for the Minnesota State Tournament in both the 400 relay and also the 500. He finished 10th at the state tournament in the 500. When Jake is not involved in school and swimming, he works both at both Ronning's and Sunset Resort on Ash River. Next year, Jake plans to attend the University of Minnesota Morris to major in business management. Jake Sladinski, the Elks May Male Student of the Month.
We have two presentations besides the public open forum. Is there anybody who would like to speak at public open forum? We didn't have anybody pre-register beforehand. There is, I can give a quick thing of the rules, but. Okay. Moving on to the presentations then. Presentation regarding a potential cooperative with Fort Francis for Boys and Girls Hockey Programs.
Can you guys hear me?
Good Marty.
Yep.
I'm Marty Gule. Thanks. Thanks for having me on the agenda. We're not here to ask for any kind of specific approval. This is really just making you aware. We would ask for his next steps from your perspective. We can answer any questions that you have. There was a one page at Centaurus, he is up. But I'll walk through that for you guys. There's a group of us on both sides. If you look at that list, you guys know Chad Baldwin is the the Broncos coach. Kevin Grover, we obviously know is has blessed us with his presence for some of our meetings. Dennis Wagner, Tyler Miller is the coach of the Muskies on the Canadian side. Jamie Davis is very involved over there in the hockey program and coaching and Eric Olson, an assistant coach with the Broncos. Jason Cable is the president of Fort Francis Minor Hockey. So the group of us have been getting together. You know, we've looked at all the participation numbers. We've discussed, you know, pros, cons, talked through different scenarios, laid out different detail and discussed an action plan on how we could execute this. You know, it's it is our finding that this combination is inevitable. And based on the numbers on our side and the declining numbers and on their side, the competitive landscape and the declining numbers of the teams they play that that this this need to happen one day and it will happen one day and we just want to be proactive and and see if we can't do it before we have to. You know, if I walk through, if I walk through the one page that we sent, you'll see what the why, it's exactly what I said. On our side, we're struggling to put a JV team together. We have tough time with numbers on the girls program. And on their side, they play in a league where they don't have any meaningful games. You know, the 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 teams they play, Canora, Dryden, some of these teams are are their numbers are declining and and they, you know, they're in risk of not having programs in the pretty near future. So we have a league. They have players. It makes a ton of sense to combine. You know, what we've looked at from a the pros and the opportunities as it is on your one page here is is keeping more kids in the community. You know, on their side, they're losing five to six players a year going somewhere else. Kids are going to Thunder Bay, kids are going to Canora. You know, they have kids that are looking at going down to Duluth Marshall. And and really, if we can give a better opportunity, we can keep kids in this community. And the Broncos have lost kids as well and, you know, with a combined program, you'll attract other kids here as well. So you know, there's, there's a heck of a hockey tradition in the in the borderland and you know, combining these two programs can keep that tradition. You know, I can, I can walk through these if you get, I don't know how these meetings usually work, Kevin, but it can be an open forum. If you guys want to answer, ask any questions, feel free to to jump in, but.
I don't, well, I don't have any particular questions right now. That's why I'm trying to think of what even questions I have right now.
If I can add in just so the group is aware, what the this core group above, not myself included, but started meeting, I'm going to guess four months ago. Correct me if I'm wrong, Marty, maybe it was six months ago. Probably a month and a half ago invited myself and kind of filled me in. I I'm in support of, and I just put at this point exploration. And where the group's at now is later this week, there we're meeting myself and a couple on the Fort Francis side with a member of the Fort Francis School to try and get, you know, get, get their questions answered and get the ball moving on that side. And then it's the rec groups on both sides as well are going to be presented to. So right now it's more of a, I mean, I think everyone that's names on the front is at least behind the opportunity, but it's trying to figure out what questions, what obstacles, what challenges may be out there before we come to, I'm going to say, obviously, the school is what I'm concerned about, but school rec hockey, school and hockey association on the other side is trying to make, make sure our ducks are in a row, get it out there, get people in the communities talking about it because that's one thing I've said, I want, you know, I want people to be heard and it is a challenge and we originally, they were talking boys hockey. It it is boys and girls both. And for me, it's a little easier to talk about girls off the bat. I mean, we struggle to put a varsity and JV together. We don't have enough kids for one team. We've co-opted with Rainy River, which has been, you know, good. And we've had three, four kids come from there. But sustainability long-term is where this, you know, needs to be looked at. You know, it's hard, I think, for both groups on both sides to kind of think about, you know, what it means to combine co-op. But it is in the best interest and I agree with Marty. Eventually, if you look at our, in the, in the school boards where, look five years down the road at our elementary numbers, we're struggling right now. Our boys hockey cannot truly field a varsity and a JV. They take kids for one period from varsity to play on JV and so on, so that they can keep, keep both teams going. And so there is opportunity, there's, there's spots created, be it in varsity JV and called a midget or a junior gold program, where every kid in both communities will have a spot to play. And so I think that was a key, if I'm right, Marty, you know, to make sure that, you know, we have room for everyone. Anyone that wants to play has a spot.
So we, I vaguely remember some discussion being had at at the rec department a while back and it was about the hockey program. And I, I remember that Minnesota hockey had a lot to do with what was guiding our decisions at the time. And I'm assuming the Minnesota State High School League has some rulings on this type of stuff too, with it being international, much less co-op. Like I remember at the time, they had to become a part of us for, it could have just been rec. So I don't know if that was high school too. That's what I don't remember.
In that hurdle, we've crossed that hurdle. I'm going to say Lake of the Woods. Rainy River crossed it many years ago. We've crossed that hurdle with Rainy River. And so it's doable, co-op with a.
They've done it, they've done it there at that school.
And we've done it here with girls hockey. We get kids from Rainy River right now. They played on ours this year. So the co-op piece is, yeah, you have to meet, both sides have to meet, I'm going to say Minnesota guidelines as far as, you know, being on track to graduation, following our, our rules, if you will. And so it's very doable. But it's getting both boards on both sides, which I'm going to say takes getting both communities on board. You know what I'm saying? And so that's kind of where we're at right now going, what do you think? You know, type deal. And I'm saying that to all board members, you know, if this was on your docket tonight, what questions would you have? What, what could we answer? As far as from a school standpoint, I don't see the cost changing. That's the first, I'm going to say, is it good for kids is number one, but right there alongside it is, does our cost change? And for the most part, I don't see our cost changing unless we don't have a program. You know, right now we pay, we pay three coaches and until we get small enough, I guess, you know, that's going to stay that way. We send one bus, you know, to out of town games. Obviously, there would be some participation fees collected from Fort Francis kids. And, you know, but again, participation fees don't go a long way. You know what I'm saying, for covering costs, but I don't see it as an added cost in any way. You know, having two full teams, I guess, maybe there could be a little more equipment. You know, needs than what we had this year, but for the most part, you also have a, I'm going to say stronger team and fundraising is a piece of it as well, you know, so. It's trying to keep the opportunities for the kids and I'm going to say for the communities. You know, we talk about being, and it's hard with COVID, mixed feelings right now, but kind of being sister cities, it's very doable. What's good for the community is good for both communities usually. And so.
Board members, does any, any board member have anything to?
Well, the only thing I'm thinking of is I assume that this, that by the time everything gets hopefully in place, then hopefully the border issue will be a non-issue too by then.
Oh, yeah, hopefully.
Correct. And there's, you know, we're trying to move it forward, but, you know, we talked about, you know, possibly having, you know, a community meeting. It's kind of tough right now because the border isn't open, you know, and even getting bigger groups together is a tougher piece. And so it's, tonight is to get it out there, what questions would the board have? But also to get it out in the community for discussion as I'm guessing the radio and the paper and, you know, people on here will start, you know, talking about it. And we think that's a good thing because, and I'm not trying to steal the show, Marty, but we want to be transparent, you know, and want people to ask the questions. We have met with a few other people. Bruce was included on one of the meetings, you know, just to try and get, you know, what are we missing? You know, what things haven't we thought about? And again, all four groups, meaning Fort Francis School, rec hockey and their hockey social. Everyone's in the loop because we didn't want, you know, come and speak to the board here and no one on the other side know about. So everyone's in the loop as far as this is coming and going to be presented to each group. But it's trying to figure out what questions are out there.
So.
For doing that, I think it's wonderful that Fort Francis and the Falls can work together on a program like this. I'm in full support.
I would be interested myself and, I mean, obviously it all sounds like a great idea, but I'd be interested in if there's some, you know, public, you know, opposition or something to that. Hear, hear the counterpart because it's not immediately coming to me, you know, what the counter argument would be on this. So maybe we do have a declining sports program. That's pretty apparent, but but we'll have time to hear the other side. If there is another side, I mean, maybe there's not, I don't know.
Well.
One of the biggest challenges is, is, and it wasn't laid out for you guys exactly yet, but Fort Francis to be eligible in the Minnesota rules needs to fold their program. And there's a big tradition.
It'll be tough over there, yeah, for sure. Yep. Okay.
And the other piece, you just, and I'm just trying to throw it out there. You know, one of the challenges right now, pretty much every boy or every girl that goes through I Falls playing hockey is pretty much going to make varsity. You know what I'm saying? Because of our low numbers. Now, the flip side is, I'm not saying that's best for all kids and best for a competitive program. The reality is down the road, kind of like, Bruce helped me out years ago, not every kid made varsity, you know, and that could happen again. There's a place for every kid. You see what I'm saying?
That's a weird problem to have.
Correct, but I'm just saying that is a piece that is going to possibly come out and I just throw it out there. That is true, you know, and.
Yeah, that, that's always been part of the game. It's always been part of the process. But it's a healthy, it's a healthy part of the process.
Okay, well, I thank you for presenting. We appreciate it. Yep, go ahead, Emily.
Sorry, I feel like I need to, I'm not very loud. So the idea of joining is, is not something that's uncommon. I think it's interesting with the border piece, that's definitely going to have another wrinkle and things. But, you know, in a lot of the other smaller districts that I've been a part of, it was pretty common that we'd have to, you know, kind of create these opportunities to join schools just for sports, have enough kids. And I think a lot of the times when, when it comes to the whole board piece, it was just, it boils down to what was kind of the needs, like you're talking about, like what does the state high school league need? And then what's the memorandum of understanding between the schools around some of these simple parts pieces like, like fees and like transportation and, you know, some of those things that get ironed out. But it certainly wasn't impossible to do and made a lot of sense for kids.
Thank you, Emily. Well, there's nobody else. Thank you, Marty, for your time and we'll be moving on to the next presentation from.
Sorry about the delay, Marty. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
No problem. Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving on to presentation from Brian Yurtic, Special Education Director on an update of the Virginia building. Is Brian on?
Brian, do you want to be able to share or are you just talking? I guess I'm not sure what you need here.
If I could share, that would be great. I have a PowerPoint presentation to show everyone.
What's that? How do, can you? Just one second, Brian.
Okay. Well, while we're waiting for that, I do appreciate the time tonight to talk to the board and let everybody kind of know and bring you up to speed on what we're working on down in Virginia that is my help.
Can you?
All special ed services. Yes, I, it looks like I can share screen now, so.
We have the floor, Brian.
All right, thank you. So yes, are you able to see Northland Learning Center? Screen now? Okay, great. So yeah, my name is Brian Yurtic. I'm the Executive Director here at the Northland Learning Center in Virginia. And as part of my job is that I'm your Special Ed Director for International Falls School District. And so we provide all kinds of different supports to your district in a cooperative model for special education that's happening within your district and across northeastern Minnesota. So I kind of wanted to start by giving everybody a little bit of a background about the Northland Learning Center because not a lot of people know that we even exist. And so I wanted to give a little bit of background there and then talk about the building project that we're taking on here in Virginia. So the, the districts that belong to the Northland Learning Center are listed here. So we can see that there are nine member districts that, that make up the Northland Learning Center co-op. And then we have recently made some agreements with the Hibbing Public Schools in the last couple of years. So we're all working together to share resources and provide supports and services to students in special education across northeastern Minnesota. So a little bit about what we do is, is providing that comprehensive special ed, alternative learning services also, so it's not just special ed. It also is our credit recovery programs, targeted services. If you hear those names, those also fall within the Northland Learning Center because we house the area's Alternative Learning Center, the ALC. So we also provide those services out to the districts that are members of the NLC. Where we serve, so just geographically looking at a map is that it, it's a large geographic area for us to cover. Most of St. Louis County and then across to Cooch County where you are and also over to Cook County on the North Shore. So our fun little fact that we like to talk about is that the NLC covers about the same area as the state of Connecticut. So we're, we're doing a lot of coordination across a big geographic area. Some of the services and programs that we provide, so like I had mentioned, that we're, we're sharing the resources among all of these districts. Most of the districts that we work with are too small in order to provide these services to your, your students in a cost-effective way. As an example, school psychologist is that most of our districts only need maybe a a partial FTE of a school psychologist or of a deaf heart of hearing teacher. And those needs may shift over time. And so we hire those staff members underneath the Northland Learning Center umbrella and then help share those resources out to the, to the districts as they're needed and adjust for that ebb and flow as you might have within your districts. So there's a whole host of different services that we're providing to those member districts. In all total, it's about 1,527 from our December 2019 child count are the students in special education that we're helping to support. And really it's pooling all of our resources so we can more cost-effectively and be able to find these resources that are, that are hard to find and bring them into our schools. Northeastern Minnesota is, so it's been a hard place to find some of these different services when especially we talk about occupational therapy or physical therapy types of services. Some of the programs that we provide, not only do we provide the supports out to the member schools, but in Virginia, we're providing programming for students. And this is, it's called federal setting for programming for students and that's grades K through 12. So you see that the top bubble that I have here is our elementary focus program. It's students, and these are students with high needs and autism spectrum disorders or emotional behavior disorder or cognitive delays. And so we're helping to provide that higher level. Level four just means that it's special education services in a separate setting all day for students. So unfortunately, International Falls is a little too far away to send students on a regular basis. So that's why, like, we've created a satellite ALC program in I Falls so that we can try to help provide some of that. So going back to our federal setting for programs, we have an elementary program and a high school program. And then we also have within our special education, it's an 18 to 21-year-old program. And that we call our Bridge to Independence Transition. And so those are students that are most likely going on to need some kind of supported employment or they're going to live in a group home. And so we're providing services to those kids when they're 18 to 21 years old. In the state of Minnesota, the state continues to fund programming for students up to the age 21. And so we're providing additional time supports to students with that program. We're also supporting our local social services, the shelter programs, so that when there are students that are placed there, that we provide that support. And then our ALC, like I had mentioned down here on the bottom, is we have grade seven through 12 and this allows us to provide targeted services and credit, credit recovery programs and satellite programs like your ALC up in International Falls. By state statute, where we are limited within our level four, the setting for programs to eight students. So it's a high staff to student ratio when we're looking at our programming here in Virginia. So we're providing all of that within the Northland Learning Center. And right now we are housed in the James Madison Building in Virginia. If you're driving down Highway 53 and look off to your left as you're heading south, as you're coming into Virginia, you can see there's a residential area by the mall. That's where we're located and, and we're hoping to be here for the long-term future. So some numbers to look at is that district enrollments is that we're looking at a, a total enrollment of all of our districts together. And this is not including the Hibbing District of just under 10,000 students that are in northeastern Minnesota. And here's our number that I had mentioned before. So in all total, when we, we take out that level four programming and our ALC programming, we're, we're providing programming for about 7% of those students here in Virginia. And local districts are transporting those students to Virginia every day to receive those services. So our project is, is that we've, we've come to a spot in our history here where the Rock Ridge School District has, has recently become a new thing for us here. So it was Virginia and Edward Gilbert districts now consolidated together. Virginia is the district that owns this James Madison Building that we're in. So for the last, it's been about 18, 19 years now that we have been leasing the building from the Virginia School District. And now with the consolidation of the districts and them building the new buildings that they are, they're not interested in holding this building anymore. So now we're at the crossroads of having to decide, what's our future? Do we continue to lease this building? Do we look for someplace else? And that, that project started back before the consolidation was final. And so we've been going for a good year and a half of, of study here in determining what's next for us. And so we, we have partnered with the company ICS. And so we, we have, um, partnered with the company ICS out of Duluth. Um, to work with us and helping to determine what is the best, uh, option for us to look at our, our space here at the Learning Center. Um, for the future. And so we came up with some, some goals that we are looking at. Is that, um, we have even in this building, in the James Madison Building that I'm in right now, it is an old building. Uh, so there are some significant facility needs, um, as we look at the, the age of the building and all the mechanicals. That, that come with it. Um, we'd like to look at doing some updating the facility. And to truly meet the needs of our students, whereas this building was originally built as an elementary school in Virginia. And that's how it was utilized for many years until we came in, in, um, about two thousand and three. Uh, is when we moved in here. And so our population of students, it, it works, but it doesn't quite, it's not quite ideal. For the programs that we are running. And then also all of the staff that we have that, that go out to our member districts and like to International Falls. They are, um, office here in Virginia and then travel out to the, the area of school districts to provide support. So our goals are to, to keep all the members together, uh, because like I said, a lot of our small districts. Really couldn't provide these services, um, on their own. And so we're, we're, our goal is to keep everybody together. To create that fairness and cost distribution. And ultimately, we would like to not have the continued rental of space. But there are some, some challenges with that also. So as we've moved along this, this project and, um, my slide is a little, uh, outdated, I noticed just a second ago. Is that we are looking at a, it's now a fifteen million dollar project. Uh, we've made some changes and revisions. Um, to this, uh, this model. And so we've gone through this process with the ICS. We looked at other buildings. We looked at, um, other locations, uh, in the area that could possibly help serve our students. And our staff that are going out to the, uh, other districts. And really we came back to the James Madison every single time. It seems like this is the best location for us. So then we started to look in more detail at the building of what, what needs to happen to make this a long-term sustainable effort for us. Like I said, we're at about a fifteen million dollar project of demolishing part of the building, putting some new additions on. And, um, remodeling some of our site here that, uh, would better fit and really set us up for a long-term, um, commitment. For, for all of our students here at the Learning Center and for the staff that are, are supporting the other districts. Um, keeps us centrally located and it's, uh, bringing all those cost efficiencies of the mechanical and heating and. Heating and cooling, electrical, water, all of that, um, to our property. Um, one thing that we are looking at is the ALC being moved to the Rock Ridge, uh, campus as our, uh, so that they could. Uh, possibly access some of the programming that's happening over there. Um, and make our, our program even more robust than it is. And our Bridge to Independence Program is on a separate location right now. Um, and we would, we'd probably continue that. As I go through this tonight, I want you to keep in mind that none of this is set in stone. We're, we're still kind of navigating through a lot of these pieces. And we're, uh, we're starting to narrow things down, but we wanted to give, um, all of the boards of our member districts. Some updates of what we're talking about because I do plan on coming back, uh, in the future and looking to, to garner support from the boards. On, uh, our plans. So just a little bit more about the building is that this is a footprint of the building on the right-hand side. And so there are pieces that were built in nineteen twenty-five and, and additions in the fifties and are most recent in nineteen ninety-six. It's really, uh, um, it looks and feels like a decent building right now, but there are a lot of those, um, hidden pieces. That a building of this, um, age comes with, uh, one of them being lead in the water because we have a lot of lead pipes in the building. Um, so we looked at that, um, at that footprint. And this, this, I know you're not able to read because it's a little too small, but it's a list of all the different, uh, pieces that we would need. To do in order to bring this building back up to good usable, um, safe space for, for all of our students. And we're looking at a, at a minimum of six point six million dollars on just bringing this building. Kind of back up to code and get it up to speed of where it, where it is. That drew us into the, the conversation about. Long-term sustainability and what do we need to do to bring in efficiencies? So like I said, we looked at, um, this is again the footprint of the building. And we're looking at the oldest parts that's down here in the, um, red checked area. Um, we, we would remove this old part, the nineteen twenty-five piece of the building. Um, add on a new addition for some classrooms in the back part of the, uh, building here. It, this project would allow us to, to remain in this building while construction is happening in this northeast corner. And then, um, and then once we're able to move into the new addition, you would be able to, um, move there and demolition could occur. Uh, at this other part and then some other remodeling that would happen. And so, uh, this would really set us up for that long-term. Um, uh, site for the Northern Learning Center staff and for the programming that's happening here. This is a little bit more detailed look at, again, possible projections of, of what some of the space may look like. Um, as we, um, move through, so it'd be a two-story, um, addition that we would be putting on to the building here. Um, this is kind of a breakdown of the cost and like I said, it comes to that, uh, fifteen million dollar. Price tag. So as we've gone through this project, we've really, um, taken a look at. How do we distribute, distribute costs fairly among all of our districts? Everybody has different needs. Everybody's a different size. And so, um, there's different affordability. That, that districts are coming into this with. And so we, we've finally gotten to the, the process or the piece. That we've taken the program space because, uh, as an example, International Falls, you don't send any students to the Northland Learning Center. So is it fair for you to be paying a part of the cost for programming that your students will never access? Um, and then there's co-op space. There's space for, like myself, as your special ed director, my office. Or other staff that are, um, housed here out of this building and traveling to all the different districts. We broke up our, our, our space into those two categories so that we could really try to split the cost. And fairly split that among the districts that are utilizing programming or not. Um, and so again, we're, we're not to final numbers yet. We're still working through some of those different pieces. But that's the concept that we're looking at is how do we fairly distribute that, that cost among, um, the different districts? So really, uh, what we've come to is that, um, we're looking at wanting to move forward with. The James Madison Site here in Virginia seems to be the best central location for us. Um, and that we have come up with this price tag of fifteen million, which we think is a. I know it seems like a lot of money, but it, we feel like it's a, it's a, quite a few revisions that we've done. To make it a, uh, an efficient building of what exactly would, would fit the needs of the programming. And staff that, that we have here. Um, so like I had mentioned, we'd be looking at sharing that, um, that cost over, uh, a twenty-year period is what we're looking at. We're looking at hopefully, hopefully making this a fixed cost so that there are no surprises down the road for any of our school districts. As we're, um, moving forward. The one thing that, uh, we have coming up next is that we want to formalize our numbers, make sure that, that, uh, this project is. Is viable with the different costs that we have, that it makes it long-term, brings in efficiencies. But the big piece that we're looking for is that we're, we're wanting to secure financial support from our local I triple R B. Um, there's, there's some significant monies that are available there for, um, our local school districts to tap into. And when they collaborate together. And really the Northland Learning Center, uh, we feel is the epitome of collaboration. And working together. And so we are, um, entering in talks with the I triple R B to seek significant funding. Towards this project so that our districts really would not see, uh, much of an increase. Minimal increase to what you currently pay towards, um, towards the Northland Learning Center and its programming already. Um, so, uh, as we move forward, like I said, I would, uh, be coming back in the future. With, uh, resolution that, uh, we would need your support on, uh, to, to look at moving this project forward. And with that, I will open it to questions. I know it's a lot of information that went over in a short amount of time.
One thing, Brian, that I thought I might mention is the, the board members, um, especially maybe some of the newer ones that might not be as familiar. But, uh, we have not paid for, you know, the programming, the level four, the eighteen to twenty-one year old. Um, I, I just want the board aware that we've, for as long as I'm aware, we've paid for the services that we get. Meaning Brian, the psych, psychologists, any specialists that we need. Um, we actually get it, um, as Jen knows and, and many others, a lot, you know, our OT and PT, we actually get, um, locally. Um, I'm not saying that's how it's been forever, but at least as long as I can remember, that's the way it is. And so we pay for what we get, so to speak. So for the most part, we've paid zero on that lease over the years. Um, when they've, the, the students in the programming down there have covered the costs. And so I just want it thrown out there, um, we will probably see a slight, um, increase. Because technically, looking at the, um, new model, which I, I'm going to say I, I support. We've never paid anything. I mean, we pay for Brian, our portion of Brian, we pay for our portion of the services. But in hindsight, if we didn't have that other program running, they would still need a building somewhere. And we should pay our share of that. And so there could be a tweak, but the, the big kicker is what I triple R B will support. And so I just, I wanted to kind of lay that out if, if board members had questions, um, because we had, I didn't want anyone thinking that we've been, you know. Paying for a lot of that level four, the eighteen to twenty-one program. No, our kids don't go there, so we don't pay that.
Thank you.
Sorry to jump in.
Yeah, no, thank you, Kevin. Well said.
Any board members?
I have something a little off topic. So if anyone wants to talk first, I, I, I just want to talk a little bit afterwards. Unless there's nothing else, then I'll speak now.
Is it about this presentation or?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Rox.
Okay, I just want to ask, um, uh, and it's related to the services and I've asked it before. Is, um, in terms of the autism services, are you guys still using the general label of ECSE? In the under, uh, three, three and under population? Or are you trying to identify autism as early as a year and a half, we're using things like the M chat? And, and trying to follow the guidelines of trying to identify specifically autism as early as possible.
So I, I know you're very familiar with, with autism, Rox, and, and I, um, we have been moving more towards, uh, involving our school psychologists. In identifying and helping to identify students with autism at earlier ages. I would say we're not there to identify them as early as that one-year-old, uh, yet. We've been, uh, looking at our three, four, five-years-olds, uh, that, that, um, we've been incorporating some testing. And involving our school psychologists in some of that, um, you know, it's, it, it really comes down to, um. Looking at what, what families are bringing in for information, if they have specific diagnoses or other information. That, that we have that maybe really points us towards some of those disabilities. And, um, and then, yeah, we're taking a look at those when, when it's coming our way.
Okay, I just, I don't want to belabor it too much, but I just want to say that, you know, um, some parents. I would hate to see the special ed staff know or have a, a strong feeling that these little, uh, two-year-olds. Let's say, because eighteen months enough, you can, you, you can sometimes identify, um, that little two-year-olds are. Um, the, the special ed staff have a strong suspicion that it's autism and, and then parents are surprised at age. Four or five, when they meet the autism criteria under, um, you know, after you, after age three. Then, then they may at age four or five be put under the autism label. Whereas if they were really had a strong suspicion at age, uh, two. The parents should at least be brought into the loop so they can at least pursue either a medical diagnosis or whatever. Um, so all I'm saying is that the younger we can get these, uh, these kids with autism identified. The earlier we can work on programming and the earlier everybody should be on board so that programming can be worked on. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Rox. All right. Thank you, Brian, for your presentation. Appreciate it. It was very informative.
Thanks and sorry for the delay.
Definitely taught me a lot of stuff that I didn't know. So thank you.
Good. Um, thank you. And I appreciate the time and have a good night.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Tony. Is there a second? And a second by Emily. Is there any further, uh, clarification needed on anything or anything you'd like to add, Kevin, about the consent agenda?
Yep, I just want to point a couple of things out. Um, number five, there's a leave request from Mr. Caveak. Um, I just want the board, uh. I, I'm in favor of that. Um, he's pursuing a, um, pursuing education matters and their contract allows for. Um, a year leave. And so, um, I'd ask that you consider that and that's why it's in here. Um, I wanted to point out number ten, um, I'm not, I am supportive of number ten, but I wanted the board aware. When we go through these, um, adoption cycles, per cycles, as we call them, English got materials three or four years ago. Um, and they got books and along with it, uh, comes, I'm going to say online resources. Um, not only their book, but other supporting resources. Well, the company that we're with, um, and it was. Their online stuff was supported by, and Ted could probably speak more to this. I don't remember if it was Adobe or Acrobat Reader. And one of these went away and they, what they did.
Dead Flash and Adobe.
Yeah, what they did is they didn't.
Would, would you put number ten on the screen?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Let me go down here. Um, whoops. Uh, ten, ten is, is just sorry, right there. Um, so anyway, their online resources went away. And as you can imagine, right now, over the last several months, not having those online resources. Has been very trying for the English department and it's not fair. And so we tried working with the company because to me. Even though we bought books, we paid for that online service and whatever supporting resources.
Yeah, you think it almost be some way there.
Well, what they did is they put their money into the new products, wanting you to buy new books. So anyway, long story short, and I have had conversation with our legal, um, team and it's not worth pursuing. But this is a different company that the English department is very happy and excited about the online resources. And so they need something. And so that's what that is. I just wanted to bring it out because they're not up, so to speak. But it's a three-year, um, and it is a cost, significant cost, um, for, for the most part, grade six through twelve. To get them to when they, their turn is up again. And so I just wanted it out there. We are using. I'm just going to call it COVID money, um, to help purchase this, but they've been, they've, they've been in a bad spot. Over the last several months because they have to go find stuff. Of course, you can't find stuff to, uh, support the text, you know, the same stuff. You know, they can find stuff. So they're happy with this. They want this. And I just wanted you aware that's where that's coming from. And I think that's the only comments I have unless someone has questions.
Does anybody have any clarification questions? Um, okay, well, then, I guess I, I, I see, uh, some of the, um, items are acknowledged of volunteer coaches. So I just wanted to say thank you to the volunteer coaches and, uh, congratulations to the coaches that we're hiring. I think that's the majority of the staff is coaches on there. Um, we have a motion by Tony and a second by Emily. And we'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpey?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Raboyne?
So, I'm sorry, yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Scokes, the beach?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yeah.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, moving on to action item number one, acceptance of gifts and donations.
The screen up, please.
Yep, I'm moving it. Just give me a sec.
So, um, we're going to have a lot of, uh, reading for some of these resolutions. So we're going to have a lot of reading for some of these resolutions, so hang tight. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for a resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations.
So moved.
I got a motion by Jen. All right, here we go. Resolution, excuse me, resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district. Whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public School ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. District donations received. Sherman Jackson Law Office, printer paper and office supplies. Carter Herbert Memorial Fund, thirty dollars. Is that what the? Oh, no, I see. I'm sorry. That, so the Sherman, I'm going to start over. Sherman Jackson, Jackson Law Office, they donated the printer paper and office supplies. Okay, I get it now. Carter Herbert Memorial Fund, thirty dollars. PCA Mill of International Falls for pool diving board replacement, five hundred dollars. Girls' basketball playoff charter bus, five hundred dollars. Boys' basketball, two playoff charter buses, one thousand dollars. Girls' hockey playoff charter bus, five hundred dollars. From the girls' hockey boosters for player socks, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Cary Park Hockey Tournament for volunteer hockey coach, three thousand five hundred dollars. From the Mr. Pete Foundation Chromebooks for FES, nine thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. An anonymous donor for the sixth to eighth-grade planners, three hundred dollars. Falls Education Foundation Supplies for Golf Team, one thousand dollars. Sheila Field Scoreboard Sponsorship, True Star Federal Credit Union, five hundred dollars, and Epic Threads, two hundred and fifty dollars. Prom donations. Align Chiropractic and Wellness Center, forty dollars. Borderland Insurance Agents, fifty dollars. Corin Dental, P L L C Shorewood Dental, fifty dollars. Family Chiropractic Center, LTD, fifty dollars. Friends, Friends Garbage Service, one hundred and fifty dollars. Green Larson Mortuary, Inc., fifty dollars. Hoopman, Robin and Sandra, oh, Robin and Sandra Hoopman, one hundred dollars. Myers Glass, K and K Myers, Inc., fifty dollars. Rainy Lake Chiropractic Clinic, twenty-five dollars. Rainy Lake Houseboats, two hundred dollars. Shannon's, Inc., fifty dollars. Up North Builders, two hundred dollars. Wenberg Transfer, Inc., one hundred and fifty dollars. PCA, one hundred dollars. All-Season Equipment, three hundred dollars. Rainy Lake Medical Center, one hundred and fifty dollars. From Suzie Broughton, twenty-five dollars. Border Bank Employee Casual Friday Fund, one hundred dollars. Border Boost, a twenty-dollar gift card. Roaches Towing, Lift Use. Swanky on Rainy Candy, Dina Lawrence, and Posh Gift Basket. City Drug, a gift basket, Sportsman's Service, Purple Yeti Bottle, and America's Best Value Inn and Suites Hotel Room for DJ. Okay, that was a lot. Thank you to everybody for your contributions to the school. I have a motion by. I'm looking for it, sorry. A motion by Jen, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Tony. Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Raboyne?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Skokstad Deach?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yeah.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Thank you to all the donors. Action item number two, Adopt or revise school year calendar 2021 to 2022, correcting MEA to October 21st and 22nd. And we don't have a resol-, that's just what it, I'll entertain a motion for that? Or do we need to?
Just need a motion.
Okay, entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
Joanne, I'll second.
Okay, and a second by Joanne. Okay, we got a motion by Rox and a second by Joanne.
Just so the board is aware, it's it's the same calendar you approved. We were off a week on MEA. So we're just correcting that now that we found, found out. So it's the calendar you approved except MEA is a week, week later. So just wanted it brought to the board so it was public.
Any other discussion on that?
Are we having anybody do the calendars this year?
To print the calendar or to put it on?
Yeah, because I know, I know some people have done the, like a fundraiser. I think the baseball team did it one year.
From the school standpoint, we don't plan unless you direct us differently to go back to doing. I can't speak for, I believe you're correct, baseball did, I'm going to say seasonal calendars. And I don't know if they're planning to do that or not. I have one hanging in my office. I don't think it's for the spring. I want to say it was winter or fall. I don't remember. Maybe it's the whole year.
Would, I guess, would this be something that if the school could print and charge for?
Well, so it has a lot to do with the amount of work that it takes to put on a calendar, to where if you only charged and sold a lot less, then you would, the same amount of effort goes into it, and that was a big part of the cost, I believe.
The other piece that came up, and I'm just going back to, and again, some of the board members have been around, and I, again, I'll go back to, I think every one of us had the calendar on our, whether it's our desk, fridge at home, whatever. But the challenge is, it's never accurate. It's accurate for fall. You know, but the second it's printed, things start changing, just like today for spring events. Spring was never really on it and accurate. And so it's been a goal to keep going to, you know, the school calendar, the website, to be more accurate. And so that's where, that's where we went, Help Me Out Board, three years ago. I I don't know.
Could be about that.
And so then some groups have went to, and I'm, again, to try and seasonally do something that is fairly accurate, but things change, and that's the biggest piece. We had prom change one year, you know, and you get a caller too like that going, geez, I always thought it was last weekend, you know, or whatever, and it was a challenge. So right now, I can't answer that if another group is or not. But I would guess if they did it and it was successful, they would continue. I know they had advertisements on it and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great fundraiser for someone. All right, here, no further discussion then. We'll do a roll call vote. Oh, and the motion was by Rox and the second was by Joanne. Roll call, Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Raboyne?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Skokstad Deach?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yeah.
Carries unanimously. Okay, resolution relating to the non-renewal of Michelle Kaneg, a probationary teacher at the end of the 2020 to 2021 school year due to the return teacher on leave of absence. I'll entertain a motion.
You want to read that?
Well, don't I need the, the first motion, right? So I need a motion to read the.
I'll make the motion.
That was Rox?
Yep.
Okay. Board member Roxanne Skokstad Deach introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas Michelle Kaneg is a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 361. Be it resolved by the School Board of the Independent Number, District Number 361, that pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A dot forty, sub D point five, and the District Master Agreement, the teaching contract of Michelle Kaneg, a probationary teacher in Independent School District Number 361, shall be non-renewed at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year effective June 30th, 2021. Be it further resolved that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding the non-renewal of the teacher's teaching contract. The voting record and the adoption of preceding resolution was duly seconded. Okay, do we, we have the discussion before the second or right now?
You you need a second.
Okay, the motion for the adoption of the proceeding resolution was duly seconded by, do I hear a second?
I'll se-, I'll second Bruce.
And seconded by Bruce Raboyne upon the vote being taken thereon. So this is where we would have a discussion.
You'd have discussion if you want.
So is there any questions about the motion?
Was this understood prior to the start of the school year, I'm assuming?
Well, specifically, no, there were about, I think, five teachers hired. You know what I'm saying? Some because of, one because a person was on leave, some because of just splitting classes. And, you know, it was explained that, you know, they may not all be here, you know, some, we, out of the five, we're keeping, I'm going to say roughly two and a half. You know, but it was not, at that point, labeled which ones would stay or which ones wouldn't, as you can imagine.
Okay, understood, yep.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yeah.
Bruce Raboyne?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Skokstad Deach?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yeah.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Moving on to the action item number four, resolution relating to the non-renewal of Cheyenne Corpi, a probationary teacher at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year due to lack of pupils' financial limitations and discontinuance of position added for the 2020, 2021 school year. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I wasn't paying close enough attention to who got in there first. So who'd made the motion?
Bruce.
Bruce, okay, that's right. Thank you. Board member Bruce Raboyne introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas Cheyenne Corpi is a probationary teacher in Independent District Number 361. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent District Number 361, that pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A dot forty, sub D five, and the District Master Agreement, the teacher contract of Cheyenne Corpi, a probationary teacher in Independent District Number 361, shall be non-renewed at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year effective June 30th, 2021. Be it further resolved that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding the non-renewal of the teacher's contract. I had a motion by Bruce. Do I have a second?
Jen.
No, a second by Jen, thank you. All right, further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Raboyne?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Skokstad Deach?
Yes, but can I also say thank you to all these teachers at the same time? I I don't want to forget to thank them.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rox. Joanne Smith?
Yeah.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
It carries unanimously. Moving on to action item number five. Resolution relating to the non-renewal of Janessa Casareto, a probationary teacher at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year due to a lack of pupils' financial limitations and discontinuance of position added for the 2020, 2021 school year. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move. This is Joanne.
Okay, I got a motion by Joanne, and we are going to read another thing here. Board member Joanne Smith introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas Janessa Casareto is a probationary teacher in Independent District Number 361. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent District Number 361, that pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A dot forty, sub D five, and the District Master Agreement, the teaching contract of Janessa Casareto, a probationary teacher in Independent District Number 361, shall be non-renewed at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year effective June 30th, 2021. Be it further resolved that written notice be sent to said teacher regarding the non-renewal of the teacher's teaching contract. I had a motion by, was it Joanne? And a second, did I hear Jen? Did you say second earlier, Jen?
Yep.
Okay, discussion. Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Raboyne?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Skokstad Deach?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Okay, action item number six, approve the hire of Janessa Casareto as an elementary teacher at Point Five Seven FTE for the 2021, 2022 school year. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move. This is Joanne.
Roxel, second.
Motion from Joanne and a second from Rox. Is there further discussion on this?
I guess I would just take the comment, and it goes this one as well as the others, and it's an unfortunate position to be in. It's one thing to have teachers that, you know, I hate to say, you have to make some hard calls, and maybe it's the best thing for them to move on. Not the case on any of the ones you acted above, and that's just unfortunate, and I just want it publicly. And I didn't want to, you know, say it three times over, but as we've done before, we've laid people off. Things change, and, you know, we've hired those same people back, so it is an honest statement that if we weren't, you know, having to reduce, so to speak, my gut is these people would all be here 1.0. So I just throw it out there. I thank them, and those of you that have been in education, you've maybe been in this position or maybe not, and, you know, sometimes things work out and sometimes they don't. But I just, A, thank you, and B, it's not, it's unfortunate. Like I say, sometimes you have teachers you want to get rid of, and it works out. Not the case in this point, but thank you.
And also, could I say that, Janessa, thank you for taking a Point Five Seven FTE position? I mean, that's a little harder to sometimes do instead of a full-time, but that's great that she's doing that.
Okay, I don't have anything to read, just.
Second.
Correct. Any further discussion? Okay, I got a motion by Joanne and a second by Rox. Roll call, Tony Corpi?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Raboyne?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Skokstad Deach?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
Carries unanimously. That is the end of the action items. We are moving on to the committee reports. Ella Bar, Jeffries, are you still with us for the student council report?
Yes, I am. Hello.
Great.
So, thank you. So all through month, or, excuse me, all through March, we did a blind date with a book, which I've explained in the past, but just a little recap, people could just pick up a free book without knowing what it was, just from the lobby of our school. So kids that don't have access to books that they get to keep, they do now. We, at the very end of March, we had another blood drive, which I'm very proud to say we hit a record number of donations since the year 2000. So that was pretty awesome. For Easter, we did a Easter egg hunt at the, for the preschoolers. This past weekend, a few of our members attended state virtually, which was pretty fun, pretty cool. It was a new way. I personally have never been to- I personally have never been to a leadership convention like that over Zoom, so it was an entirely new experience. But we learned a lot of good things that will hopefully be able to implement at our school. Next week, our student council will be doing our own leadership week. So within our student council, we'll be learning how to just be better leaders in general. And then in general, we are just working on some end of the year events, spring sports week, and then we'll be starting our elections here in the beginning of May. So yeah, that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much, Ella. Does anybody have anything for Ella? Okay, thank you. Melissa Tate, elementary principal.
Our enrollment number is at 457, which is the same as it was last month. And then our grades three through five will be starting their MCA testing. Some classes start tomorrow. We're working on a condensed track and field day just for grades four and five with no spectators. And they probably will not have all of the events, but we wanted to give them something that they could do. And then we are in the midst of planning for our grade level carnival. You know, at the end of the year, we always do a carnival for PBIS and kids usually earn Bronco Pride tickets or they get like a golden ticket for their performance on MCA test. This year, everybody is welcome to the carnival without any Bronco Pride tickets for entrance. Just because it's been a tough year and everybody's done really well. So we will be hosting a carnival. We will just mostly be doing our inflatable's and we will be doing it by grade level as to not mix different grades and keep the group small. So our kids are very excited for that. That's all I have really so far right now.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Missy? Excuse me, one sec. Okay, Tim Evers, thank you. Tim Eversen, secondary principal?
Our enrollment is at 537 this month. We're down five from last month. We are also in the process of MCA testing. We began our MCA reading testing last week and we're continuing reading this week and then we'll be moving into math and science. Our spring sports are underway at the high school now. And actually, our girl softball team is playing Little Fork in Little Fork. And we are in the process of finishing up schedules. Schedules have been run and Mr. Grewatz is working out.
One sec, we might have ran out of battery.
Sorry, ran out of battery.
There's the wrong link again.
We are working on schedule conflicts. Mr. Grewatz is working on, working with families and students to get their schedules correct. And then we will be putting those out so that students can see them shortly. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. Kevin Grover, superintendent.
Okay, I get, in no specific order here, a couple of things. First of all, we're starting to get some requests and I've actually reached out to all four unions as far as negotiations to get the process going. I'll be honest, 510 has not thrown out any dates yet. They, their business person is out for a little bit. So my plan is, I just want to let you know, I'm going to email the negotiation groups to try and get some dates and times that will work. So for $47.98, just reminding you, it's Tony, Jen, and Joanne. And so I, June has given me some possible times. And I would like to throw some options out to you, see if they work, don't work. And again, we're looking, you know, May, June, July. But I want to get things on the calendar for all of us if we can and for them. The same with 331, which is the teachers group, that is Ted, Bruce, and Jen. I asked for some dates. They're, they're not interested until schools out here. I think they have one or two people coaching. So afternoon evenings is tough. So most likely it's going to be mid-June before we get some start with them. And so same thing, I'm going to throw a group email out to those three and we're fine to talk back and forth with, with our group. And then admin is, is waiting a little bit or going to drag a little bit too. So I'm just throwing out the next couple of days. I'll throw some things out because everyone's calendar is busy. If we don't get a few dates on there, it just seems that, and, and we might have to go where, you know, it's two out of the three, for instance, can make it. And we'll just see what we can do. So I'll be having individual conversations. We'll get that going. One thing I did want to, and I'm going to ask for permission, those of you that have been on the board at least three years, I had, I have one niece and one nephew. And unfortunately, our graduations line up. And I asked for permission to go to my niece's graduation three years ago. And I'm just, I'm going to say graduation worked as good or probably better than it ever has when I was not here. So I'm asking for that permission again to leave Mr. Eversen in charge and the board members, so to speak. Those of you that have participated kind of know what, we will have it all ready to go. It is being planned for the arena right now. We'll have limited spectators. It will be televised and so on, but I need to know if I can be gone for that or not. And.
Well, the place didn't burn down when Tim did it last time. I don't think.
So anyway, and I guess if you, I'm not asking for action, if anyone has a major issue, please let me know. And I will adjust my plans accordingly. I, I have a couple of things on, and then I'll be done. Board retreat, and we're working on pulling data together. The one thing, and I don't know if, if Emily, Jen, if, if there's actually a group I should work with to facilitate. What I'm getting at is, for instance, do we want to have it in this building? Do you want me to find an outside? You know, it's not, it's just not normal. We've never done this. You know, I'll just be honest. And I haven't asked Joanne or that group. You know, there's certain places that have, you know, larger meeting rooms. I mean, library, I'm sure, May 21st, we could probably get, it's a pretty big area. Otherwise, there are places that have, you know, conference rooms, we possibly could.
Yeah, there's Blonsi space, there's the airport.
Yeah, I'm just asking you, does someone have a preference where you would like to go? Or should I work with a certain group? I've started, like you say, putting certain things together, but I want to kind of.
Jen, Emily, anybody else?
You know, food.
Conference room is available too.
Okay, yep, that's one I jotted. I mean, I guess I'm asking what direction? Do you want me just to run with it and plan it? Do you want me to work with a subcommittee?
So who's, who's planning that? It was Jen and Emily and?
I think Rox, maybe.
Rox.
Oh, yeah, I can so, I, you know what, I don't have my, what is the time of day? I don't have it in my calendar for time of day.
We, we pretty much, I had penciled in eight to four, saying, you know, a normal, quote unquote, normal day, so to speak.
Yeah, I, I would prefer you just go ahead and find a place. I don't think, but that's only me.
Kevin, and I don't mind helping with some of those logistics so that it doesn't all, I think as a board retreat, we should take some responsibility and helping to organize it for you instead of leaving it on your hands. And I'm happy to help with picking a spot. I think an offsite spot might be nice because it's maybe partially less distracting for you, but and if we can find a decent one in town, it'd be good and.
Why don't, okay, I will reach out and if, unless someone else objects, I have some conversation with Jen. If anyone has input on a place they'd like to go or certain type of food you'd like, you know, brought in or that type of thing. Feel free to let me know, email, call. Otherwise, I'll work with Jen and we'll just kind of run with it. We'll get the agenda. Because we have, have to do a public notice out on where we're at and so on. We'll get that posted.
Kevin, this is Emily too and Jen. I can help with some of that stuff too, because I agree with what Jen's saying. That shouldn't all fall, that shouldn't fall on your shoulders to kind of set that pizza up. So, you know, whatever, whatever way you want to go there.
Perfect, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the only other thing I have, just to give you a heads up, I will be setting another, excuse me, planning meeting with our, I'm going to call it COVID planning team for April 28th to assess where we're at. I don't know if we will talk moving or not, but, you know, we're back in hybrid at nine through 12 and wanted to give it a few weeks to, you know, see how things are going. And if you look at our graphs, things are knock on wood, you know, going in the right direction. I'm not saying county and state is necessarily where we want to be. But just give me a heads up, we will continue conversation. And that's all I have unless someone has questions.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
I don't know if it's the appropriate time, but how is the geese situation?
Haven't, haven't seen a goose yet.
Because I have, I've seen geese in town. I was just wondering.
Well, no, no, I'm sorry. I have seen geese this spring, yes. But as far as on our property so far, and what I'm guessing is when things start greening up now, I'm just throwing it out there, Rox. That's probably when they're going to, you know, start stopping by. But I'm not aware, and Tom and I talked, well, it's probably been a week and a half ago now. Got to start keeping our eyes out, but knock on wood, we haven't seen anything yet.
Okay, are we still looking for people to do things to help get rid of those geese in terms of walking dogs, et cetera?
When we start having the issue, there, the first thing we'll be going out will be, call it a call for action, you know, but.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Sort of a prom update, just as how far as how you went at the arena?
Well, I guess I will, I will say prom went. There's pieces I think went very well. There's pieces, I'm just going to say, I think a little challenged by, and I, I don't know how far I want to go on that right now, Tony. There's things, like I say, there's pieces, I mean, far as decorating, as far as I watched, you know, parts of the, I'm just going to call it the grand march, which I think went okay. Saw kids sitting with masks on. I'm starting to hear things and I've looked at some video later in the evening. I think there was more congregating, which I'm just going to say is a little disappointing to me. You know, we had a group in place. They put a nice plan in place in front of us. And the follow-through may be lacked. And again, everyone's going to have different opinions on whether that's right or wrong. But I look at it, this is our building, it's our facility. And again, the group that planned, I'm not throwing darts, but I think it could have been managed a little better at certain times. Let's put it that way.
Okay, I just hadn't heard anything, so I just wanted to see. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Kevin? Okay, committee reports, community advisory board. Do we have Dan or?
Dan's not going to be with us. He's at the city council meeting.
Okay, is there anybody from the community advisory board that was at a previous meeting or anything? We can catch up next time too. Okay, recreation commission, somebody who was at the last meeting, a representative, do they have anything to add? Okay.
And we meet this Wednesday though as well.
Yeah.
It always seems like it'd be better if that was a week earlier because it's always, it always ends up like that. It is just what it is. Okay. So then we are on to adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I got a motion by Rox and a second by, who else said it?
Emily.
Emily. At 6:44 PM. We'll do a roll call vote. Tony Corpie?
Yes.
Emily McGonigal?
Yes.
Bruce Rablin?
Yes.
Ted Saxton, yes. Roxanne Skokstad Beach?
Yes.
Joanne Smith?
Yes.
Jennifer Windows?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.